It's six o'clock. I'd like to call for the Planning and Zoning Commission being of March 2nd, 2023. Can we begin with roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hector Garcia.
Present.
Mike Farone.
Present.
My name is Gabriel.
Present.
Johnny Nandwet.
Present.
Yushen Wang.
Present.
Reikiya Portillo. Daniela Salabas.
Present.
Ana Villarreal.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Okay. Do we have anybody called to be excused or must be made?
Yes, Hector Garcia did ask to be excused. He is chairman of Border Limbic's track, and he's setting up for this weekend's training.
Make a motion to excuse the absent commissioners.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Stand up for the vigilance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Cuba, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Commissioner Portillo here.
We're now going to move on to the discussion for the minutes. For special meeting, February 15th, 2023.
Motion, fifteen?
We have a motion to.
A second.
You have a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any citizen comments?
Mr. Chairman, we have the three citizens that would like to comment, but I believe they want to wait for the item to come up, and then they'll speak on that item. And that would be item.
Six C.
Six C.
Okay. We're going to open up the public hearing and move on to consideration of the volume preliminary plats and preliminary unit plats. Item six A, it's preliminary consideration of the replat of all of Lot 5, Block 2, Pintovaya subdivision Phase 1 and tractable land conveyed by D to PG Alpha LLC and PG Omega LLC, PJ Indigo, and File 1 Imperial Partners LP into Lot 5A, Block 2, Pintovaya subdivision Phase 1. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is PG Alpha, PG Omega, PJ Indigo, Five Zero One Imperial Partners. Engineer is Holland Engineering and Serving. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is AG M1, and a portion is within the ETJ. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed replat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, may I ask you, men, it's Holland Engineering representing our client, and we concur with staff comments, and I don't know if you guys have any questions that I can answer. Be glad to.
Any questions from the commission?
No.
If not, we're going to wish you the question.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item six B, preliminary consideration of the plat of 101 U.S. Highway 83 subdivision, and the granting of variance to the front setback from 25 feet to 20 feet, a side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet east side, and reduce the minimum width for the primary access easement and paving section from 50 feet wide to 20 feet wide for both. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Rogelio Bautista. Engineer is Victor Linares, Savio Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is B3. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victor Linares with Savio Engineering and Associates. I'm here in support of the item, and I concur with staff comments. I'm here to answer any questions, if any. Thank you.
Any comments from, any questions from the commission?
Yes, staff, is there any issue with these setback requests?
The grant of variance, that one?
No, ma'am. So, if I may, so the engineer had submitted a request for variances in a certain configuration. We looked at it, and it's based, we did some tweaks to those variances, and those are based on the items that are actually under the authority for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those are identified in Planning Comment Number 1 and 2. So if you were to grant a variance, it would have to be under that criteria, under those criteria there.
And then, just in case, Victor Linares again, that one of it on one of the sites, I, we have no issue with it. So we can pretty much update, do that update.
So you do concur with those two, right, grant the variance as it states there?
Correct, yes.
The access next to the property, is that like a public easement, or is that a street?
No, if anything, if I could have the view, pretty much what's out there, there's, there's actually no, no access easement. So we're trying to provide one, pretty much for the residents on the back. And so that's one of the purposes of this plat also, one of the sides of trying to make this lot plat it itself, but also to define that access to the lots right behind it. Just to make a long story short, those tracks pretty much have that issue where it's kind of more by oath, where there's, there's a track that goes to the other lots, but technically on paper, there's none. But on this plat, we're looking to add that access, to formalize that access to those lots.
To incorporate it within the lot?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, this is a question for staff as far as variances. So he wouldn't have to go to the Board of Adjustment if we allow these variances here on the commission?
As Mr. Villalvi said, what he did was he put here the authority that you have, okay? If there's something outside the authority of planning and zoning, yes, he would have to go to Board of Adjustments. But at this time, he's agreeing with.
The variances would be allowed here, he wouldn't have to go to the BOA?
That's correct.
That is correct. If he wanted something different from what's here, he would have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
There's no further questions. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'm going to approve subject to your own comments.
Okay, okay.
You have a second from Commissioner Villarreal. Call in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item sixty, preliminary consideration of the plat of La Vista Zalaville. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is James Gonzalez, engineers Ricardo Villarreal, Topside Civil Group. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two-lot development is B3. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning. UISD. And a proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, you do have the cards? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ricardo Villarreal with Topside Civil Group, representing the client. We do have just a couple of exceptions, so a couple of comments on here. The first one would be plat note number four. And I think that's kind of an open-ended comment. Every time we apply for driveway permits, at that point, we're giving specific parameters to follow. Either we get it approved, we don't get it approved, if it's right in, right out. I know TechDOT has been putting medians down the center of 359 and 59 to eliminate left-turn lanes in this area. After speaking with TechDOT, they have held off on putting in a median. So the purpose of the center turn lane stays what it is, is access to go into these properties. Now, the comment is, if deemed necessary, so I kind of want to leave it for the, I guess, building permit and the application and for then of approval. They can deny us driveways as well, so whether the note's there or not, it ultimately comes down to the approval process on that. But I'll, I mean, I'll, I guess I'll, you know, with planning to see how we go about it. But I would just like for it to get studied a little bit more before we put kind of a heavy comment like this. Like I said, it all depends on location, spacing, amount of traffic that comes in, and at that point is when we get the approvals or, hopefully not denials in that case. So that's on Planning Note Number 4. Planning Note Number 5, I guess we can take both of them at the same time. Provide a plat note that prohibits access to existing side streets, see comments provided by UISD. We understand that there's some streets behind this development that are within the SAC complex. You have an elementary school there, a couple of schools, as well as our SAC development. A little bit of history with this track. My client and his family originally owned roughly about 99 acres here, which, if I can, let me put up a plat just. This is the UISD Student Activity Center plat. So what's highlighted in yellow are platted lots already. If you include this corner lot and this lot that's in question right now, the preliminary plat that's in play, that totals roughly about 99 acres. My client had partially donated, turned over land to UISD to build the SAC. Within that agreement, that warranty deed, the agreement was to allow access to a .77-acre track, allow access for utilities, construction, ingress and egress, and so on and so forth. That is delineated in the green. And I do have, I mean, I don't want to get into specific details unless I need to, but this is the actual warranty deed highlighted stating the easement. This was back when the land was, was turned over. So I think this comment is more of a a comment that is probably going to be taken care of between two parties, the owner and UISD, to put a plat note specifically stating that we can access it. And I know UISD, I know there's representatives from UISD here that are going to come up. But the purpose of the planning process, and when we go through the TRB, or the city goes through the TRB, you kind of get comments from every department. They do invite the school districts, as well as TechDOT. At some points, the railroads, depending on who's in the vicinity. And those comments are usually, if you're plating your school, make sure you abide by the correct signage, you know, school zones, so on and so forth. In this case, it is our opinion that this is basically coming, this comment is coming from a private sector. And I know the school's public, but they own this land more in the private. I can't just walk into it and do whatever I want, like I want. So that agreement between the owner, which we feel we have access to the green area, and UISD should probably be taken care of in another forum and not planning and zoning. So we would like that comment stricken. In this case, I would like to hear, you know, UISD's point of view, but our official stance here is that we can get those two comments stricken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have three cards to have. Mr. Jeff Quigg, Mr. Ken Balls, and Mr. Ignacio Anis, if you all would like to come around this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jeff Quigg, KCI Technologies, representing United Independent School District. And like Rick said, the objection comes from the district with regards to it being private streets. I don't believe this is the proper form to identify whether it's titled, true title to access to the private streets that they have and we do not have, and we grant that. So I believe that we respectfully request that you all consider delaying or tabling this item so that items like that can be worked out. Moving forward with this item would simply push it down to another governing body and pass that buck on. So you all have the authority at this point to table it, and that we had asked that you consider that before you do anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, who would like to come up next? Mr. Ignacio Anis?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commissioners. My name is Ignacio Anis, Director of Construction Management, UISD. And the UISD administration has informed me to convey and express that UISD is not providing consent to the use of the private streets as top line in the comments, and basically due to safety, safety concerns.
Thank you.
Ken Balls, on behalf of UISD, I would just like to put the Planning and Zoning Commission on notice that the the access to the streets right now is subject to litigation. And so that UISD is requesting that this item be tabled so that these matters can be resolved in an orderly fashion within the judicial system as opposed to putting titled questions and questions of the legal right to use this property before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Mr. Ross, currently this is in litigation, is that correct?
Oh, it's correct.
Just to add on the comment, I think we might be opening up a new can of worms here. And the reason is, when we talk, see, we're not against whatever a judgment is ruled. If the judgment is ruled that we can access it, we can access it. If the judge rules that we can't, we can't. We still have access off of US 59. But what happens here is, once you put a plat note on a plat, that gives that teeth. So whether a judge rules, hey, you can access it, but the plat note stays, the plat note takes precedence now, because now it's on a plat, a recorded plat. So I think we need to separate certain things here because if a neighbor comes in on another plat and says, hey, I don't want them to do something here because I'm about to sue, or I'm about to do this, you start getting different entities than what really the plating process is responsible for, right? You can only control so many things. The city can only control so many different avenues. And, and if something like this happens, it can set a huge precedence for future projects to where anybody that's against anything, hey, you're building an apartment complex right next to mine, I don't want you to build it, I'm about to sue you, and then all of a sudden you come, and there's litigation, and then everything gets put on hold. Like we said, we're not against the judicial process, by all means, that's what's going to take place here. But what we want is, whatever happens, happens, and that gets taken care of there. Your note here isn't going to stop the judicial process. If we get to access it and they agree, yes. If we don't, don't, right? We'll figure out another avenue through 59, something else. But to put it on the plat and bringing in, in our, in our opinion, a private note per se on here, I don't understand how the city's going to enforce that, you know? Then this, it puts the city as mediators. So again, you know, tabling it can take a long, long time. But I think we all are in agreement that whichever way the judicial system goes, we have to abide by it, whether the plat note is there or not. We just want to leave it open that if it does go in our favor, we get to access it and not have a plat note on the plat that all of a sudden undoes that decision. So I don't know if anybody has any questions from.
I have a question. What's going to be built? Do we, do we know?
We don't know yet. It's being prepped for a commercial development. I think the track is 5.27 acres. They've been trying to, to convey it, but it might be a little bit too big for it, so they want to platter it into two separate plots, a plat, I mean lots, and make it a little bit more marketable. But at this point, we don't have an end user yet. But it is going to be commercial use.
It's going to be.
What is the recommendation or what from Gable?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not a court of law, so we're not going to be able to determine, you know, whether or not they get access to those, to that easement. I will say they do have access off of 359 already, so we would be able to approve the plat with that. But as far as placing the plat note on here or not, I don't know that it's an appropriate kind of do that until there's a final determination by a court as to whether or not, you know, that's going to be something they can access or something they can't. Because, I mean, I sort of agree that we shouldn't put a plat note on there restricting it on the basis of a decision that hasn't been made yet.
And staff is in agreement. We could, we could take out four and five. We're very familiar with the case, and we know that, you know, if, if he were to come forward in the future, we'd ask for documentation to verify that he could, you know, he has access or he doesn't have access. So we can stay on top of it and, and wait for the results. So we don't have a problem with removing four and five.
Of planning, four and five of planning.
I have additional comments. It does concern me that, that the board would take the precedence of, of not placing a plat note. It can be removed at a later date. You have preliminary plat, you have final plat to go through. So our objection right now can be looked at initially and placed as a plat note, or you can table the item until it gets resolved. Moving and setting that, like you said, the precedence of, of plating the property gives it to another jurisdiction, sends it to a different, you all no longer have to deal with it because you've said it's okay to, to plat the property. So at this point, if there's concerns with, with respect to legal issues, I, as an engineer, I would say that having access, I don't like to touch that. It's not my forte. But as, as well as you all looking at it from a plating standpoint, I think either tabling it or putting the plat note and then removing it at final plat if so deemed that it doesn't require it.
Do we know, like, is it already in process? He says that it's already in legal.
Under legal?
Under legal?
Yes.
Do we know where, where it stands right now, or do we have a date?
The petition's been filed by the landowner. The city of Laredo has filed an answer, because the city of Laredo was also sued. And United Independent School District was sued. It has filed a plea to the jurisdiction, and its answer, the city of Laredo has raised several affirmative defenses, including a plea to the jurisdiction. And so UISD has filed a plea to the jurisdiction and an answer. So the, the litigation is, is, you know, at its, you know, at its infancy. But the concern is that something will happen here that will be used by a party in the litigation. And so the idea is for the parties to keep the position that they're in right now as opposed to going down the plating process while the litigation's going. And so that, that's, you know, that's the current, the concern of the district that if, if that plat note is not placed on there, then that would be used in the litigation as a, as a tool to.
Get, go forward.
You know, propel the, the suit forward. In our view, the best thing to do is to table the, the item. Because if there was no question, if there was no question but that these were private streets, then that normally is not something that the Planning and Zoning Commission would, would allow. But there is a question. UISD is taking the firm position that, that this is part of their plat. If you can go back to the screen. The, the recorded plat? Right there. If you, this is, this is what they filed in order to present to the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. And if you notice, there's no, there's no public streets reflected there. And there's no streets reflected there. So the plat as it exists right now doesn't have streets there because those are private streets. The position of UISD is that those are private streets and they belong to UISD. And that's why, even in the documentation that they've submitted, they're not calling those their streets. They're not calling them public streets. They're just calling them utilities. And so the concern is that if indeed there was no question, if, if you had not been shown that deed earlier that indicated that there was an original, that there was an original right-of-way, which has long since expired, by the way, is the position of UISD, that there would be no question. If, if everyone walked up here tonight and said, this, these are private streets, and, you know, we want to begin the process of at some point having access to these private streets, it is something that the Planning and Zoning Commission would not endorse. UISD does not seek to gain an advantage through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so our recommendation or, or request is that the matter be tabled until this issue can be resolved so that whoever comes before you can say, here's a judicial determination, there's no question. The street, these are streets, they belong to the landowner. These are streets, they belong to UISD. These are streets that belong to the city of Laredo. UISD is taking the position, and very confident of its position, that those are its private streets, and that is its plat. And that is bolstered by the fact that even what's been filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission to be considered tonight reflects those as only utility easements. And so, but, you know, to, to keep an open mind and to kind of keep things on an even footing, UISD would not oppose tabling this particular action until there is more, there is more, more clarity from the judicial system. So that the Planning and Zoning Commission is not having to determine if these are private streets of UISD, or if these are public streets of the city of Laredo, or if these, or if this property actually belongs to, to the landowner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, if I, if I say one more thing, just to clarify something on the plating. I'm not an attorney, so, you know, I feel like I'm in a courtroom here, something law and order. But I think I am very in tune with what the plating process entails. So the issue here is not whether it's a private street. We don't, the issue here is there's an agreement that we can access their private streets. So the street is going to stay private. The issue here is I have an agreement that I can use your private street. Now, what is that? Has nothing to do with this process, absolutely nothing to do with this process. That's a private matter. That, that is a matter between two private entities. I have public access, right? What happens between the owner and UISD is a private matter. Now, I know it's, it's been stated that, that they're not shown as public streets or private streets. We don't show access agreements. We don't show access between private parties because you just show public improvements on a plat. So this whole litigation agreement, judgment is only based off of whether we can access their private streets or not. It's not going to change anything on the plat. It's, we're not going to show, oh, private easement, only we can use this easement. No, because that's not a, a public improvement that's required by the city of Laredo on a plat. The other thing is, on this, on this deed, the easement exists up until the point where the roads get dedicated and accepted over to the city. If they haven't been dedicated or accepted over to the city, the easement still exists, which that obviously has not happened, correct? So that's, that's where we stand. It's, it's mainly, it's something that, yes, there's a disagreement on the private end that has nothing to do with this process, nothing. It, it's, it's a private matter. Like I said, if whichever way it goes, we have to abide by it. There's no getting away from it. This, whatever decision, whether we table it or we don't, you know, we're not, this is in the ploy to get a better system. This is a ploy to get this going, and we'll be back in, hopefully, a couple of months to submit for final plat. So, so our timeline is probably significantly quicker than, than what probably the judicial process that we, again, for the record, are still going to abide by. So whatever decision is made, you know, I just, I would like to get the planning directors, you know, I had never seen this before in 20 years that I've been doing this, where a private entity comes and puts in a, a private note. note. I know the school district's public, but in this case, it's again a civil private matter. I don't know if I can, you know, we can get the planners' opinion on this.
You know, this came up once before. It's been trying to be platted in the past. There's always been this question. Once again, whether they have access or not, that's going to be, they'll figure it out and then they'll let us know. So, we are going to make sure that we double-check that when they come through the process before they even get to construction. They're not even going to get to construction if we don't have clarity on this.
No. I know here you have, I know it says deemed necessary by traffic safety department and text department transportation. Is there any way to also include deemed necessary based on judicial process or the litigation decision that is made?
No, he's talking about item five.
You're talking about item five?
Four and five.
Because the whole, put a disclaimer on it?
Yes.
Good.
Whatever is adjusted to four and five, the U S D comment is still be there because that's not real.
What's in front of you right now is consideration of the preliminary plat. You do have the authority to table it. If you would like, you can approve it as is. You can remove the comments. You can add to it.
May I be heard?
Mr., can I have a question for?
Excuse me, Mr. Walls. Sorry. She asked to be heard first. Go ahead.
Sorry, just real quick, a question for the planning director and staff. In your opinion, what are the potential risks and negative impacts from removing comments four and five?
The potential risks? So, four, you know, our concern with that one is the left turn coming out of that property. It's a very busy street. So, we would like to see some kind of protection that we're not going to get people crossing over, turning left, right? So, but, that would be on 359, which is a tech stop high range. So, tech stop is the ultimate say on that, you know? So, tech stop would determine what they think based on safety and whatever the engineer submits. And then tech stop will tell him what they would like to see. So, that's why he's saying to take that out, because really, it's up to tech stop. We would recommend a right-in, right-out, simply because for safety reasons, we like that. But, it could be left in, it could be taken out, because at the end of the day, it's tech stop that makes that call. And then, on number five, provide platnot that prohibits access to existing side streets. If we were to take that out, that we're still going to make sure, we will want to make sure that they have permission if they want to, if they want to access. We got to make sure that they can. Now, I mean, knowing that the legal team is here and stuff like that, so we're going to have to double-check that. So, I know that it wouldn't go through without us double-checking that. But, I understand Mr. Walls' is a point of having it in there. I understand the point of Mr. Rial having it taken out. You know, they're both valid.
Opinions.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I want to. Yeah, just clarification again with Mr. Walls. So, Mr. Walls, currently right now, the district believes that these streets are private.
That is correct. The district's position is these streets are private streets that are on U S D property.
So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that one more time. And then, for planning, you know, I think there's questions right now that you were bringing up as far as traffic impact, traffic studies, things like that, that could potentially affect this area. So, I know that's also a consideration that we have to consider. And the other thing is, I know we've postponed items before when it comes to issues with litigation. We've asked legal before to check when there is an issue with CUP. And there's discussions between the applicant and the owners. And we have postponed items before with issues, especially with legal issues. But, at the same time, for the record, I'd like to say that I am going to abstain from this item. So, but I just wanted to make sure, I shared that.
If there's no further discussion, is there a motion that Commissioner wants to make?
To clarify, I would also have to abstain from this item.
Still have a little bit more, correct?
I'm sorry, what was?
You have two extensions, so we still have two.
Two extensions, yes.
Okay.
I, just a comment. I think that I would feel more comfortable if we could reword both items four and five to give the perspective that it, we are kind of standing neutral within the litigation process.
So, would you like to state a motion in that way, or would you like to?
Would it be possible for, to create a motion that leaves it to the planning staff to create those statements, those edits?
What was the statement that you would like to add?
Sort of the disclaimer that was brought up earlier, to add in disclaimers on both items, along the lines of what you said, Mr. Navarro, about number five, for example, it will still have to go through the additional review. And then, an item for the disclaimer of deemed necessary by the litigation decision.
Would legal be able to provide a suggestion?
Right. We can word it something to the effect of platnot that prohibits access. It'll be something like platnot will be required dependent upon the outcome of the litigation that's pending. And then, we just have to, I mean, we'll work on it and clean it up. But, that's basically the gist of it, right? Whichever way the judge rules, that's the way, you know, if they have access, they have access. If they don't, they don't.
Ask a question. I think we're in the process of, I don't know if there's been a motion yet.
I haven't made one.
Okay.
I just have a question. So, our thing is more timing, right? So, like I said, in two months, we're coming final. Chances are, the legal system hasn't taken effect yet. So, we'll be recording that plat relatively sooner than later, probably a lot sooner. So, I, so just, I don't mind keeping note number four on there. It is open-ended for us. If deemed necessary actually works for us, it's more of a note that, you know, it's kind of like, it's working, it's working both ways. So, if the traffic department says we need it, we need it. If we don't, we don't. So, note number four, that way, so it can be taken out of discussion. I think we can, we can work with that one. On note number five, I don't know if we do put a note based off of litigation. Again, we're on a normal plat timeframe, which hopefully in two months, we come in and you're going to see a final plat coming through. And chances are, again, we all know, I mean, some of us are, or not some of us, but some are, a lot of attorneys in here, that can take a long time. And if there's an appeal, and so on, so forth. I just think that that's more of a, again, a legal, private issue. And, you know, so if we word it in a way, it also has to be worded in the sense that, hey, if we come in for final plat, the judicial system is still going to take its course. And a platnot is not going to change a judgment in a way. So, that's what we're worried about, about just rewording something that, again, in two months I come and we're not ready yet.
Once, as Mr. Quigg had stated, you know, we could leave that comment in there. And if he has access or whatever, he can always come back to replat, to remove that comment at that point in time.
That's, that was my next question. Because both of you have good points, okay? You and Mr. Walls and Mr. Quigg. So, in our position, there's a lot of
Unknown.
What did he say?
Unknown.
Unknown things. And we are in a position where both, we agree with you and we agree with you. So, we don't want to affect nor your timing, nor their position. So, what I think, if what Mr. Navarro stated right now, is leave them there and be able to, at the final plat, or what did you say, the terminology?
The plat recorded, he can come back and replat.
He could come back and replat to another plat. Would you agree?
Well, in all fairness, I mean, that's kind of very unfair for my client. And the sense is, a replat takes another three months, four months, just by following procedural processes. You know, you submit, two weeks later is the meeting, then two weeks, one-stop-shop, then I have to get comments for two weeks, then I submit to planning, another two weeks. So, just if everything works perfect, just to take out a platnot, it can go that big route. So, that's what I'm saying, like, and I hate that the commission's in this position. I don't think the commission should even be in this position. It's, now we're starting to base our decisions off of legal judgments, right? And that's also why I wanted legal opinion. I don't know when's the last time we had a private comment on here and then wait for a judicial system that is, it doesn't matter, we still have to abide by it. That's my thing. Whether we, when we take off the note, and if it doesn't exist, and two, three years later, it says, a judge rules, we can't access that private road, then we can't access it. There's nothing the city has to do. In this scenario, if it works our way, I have to come, and it's a burden on the property if I have sales and I have to wait four to five months to replat it to take out a note.
What other accesses are you going to have, other than those two that you want to use?
So, based off, and I know Captain Dominguez can testify, to testify, no pun intended, right? Can testify to this.
Law and order.
Is, you know, certain developments, certain require two access points, right? Depending on how big the buildings are, where it is, if tech stop allows us certain access points at this. So, whenever we have the mechanisms to provide as much access as we can and flow throughout the whole sense, you know, we haven't even gone to the engineering part of it, right? If this gets developed and we get the access in the back, now we're not flooding that intersection off of one access point. So, there's different aspects that we've looked at. There's different aspects that the original landowner, when he gave the land, looked at. "Hey, I'm going to give you this land, but I'm going to get, I'm going to get to accesses." I mean, that's only, that's only fair. It's in a deed. Now, if somebody's challenging it, I'm all for that. Like, that's what our judicial system is for. But, we are not in a judicial system. And that's, that's what I want.
Thank you. Legal has a comment?
Yes, I would recommend if we are looking at including a platnot, that we try and make it as neutral as possible. That way, we could, you know, even, he wouldn't have to come back and undo it. It would just be on there and it would be, you know, basically pointless. Something to the effect of access to side streets, Santa Claudia and Santa Monica would be contingent upon the pending litigation. And then, you can reference the cause number or something. And then, that way, everyone knows, look, whatever the outcome of this is, that's whether he has access or not. And then, that way, look, come back later, there's no need to remove it. Or, if they're victorious, then they have no access.
Okay. So, based on the comments from legal, is there any, a motion from the commission on this matter?
I make a motion to approve, subject to the comments, with the changes that legal is recommending for item five. But, we'll leave number four on there. This five, we'll change it, so that we'll let the courts decide and not us. I mean, to me, I think five is a legal matter. Four is a planning matter. And so, we'll leave that one in. But, five is definitely a legal matter that, you know, you'll get resolved in the courts, not here.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from the commissioner?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Abstain.
Oh, abstain. Two extensions. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item six A, preliminary consideration of the last called plat, Celito Lindos subdivision. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant for the record is Celito Lindo. Engineer is Holland Engineering and is our main company. Proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one-lot development is R1A. Location view, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner? Again, we give a few minutes with Holland Engineering for the record. We concur with most comments except traffic, traffic comment. The only one they have is, the one is to restrict the left turn in and make the driveway right-in, right-out only. We don't agree with that. I was able to meet with him, with the director briefly, and we did discuss several alternatives to address his concern. Not sure if he had the time to remove it or not. I would ask to remove it, but if we can't remove it, I'd just ask to, for me to be able to work that out in the one-stop-shop process.
Okay. Do we have, do we have a comment from traffic in regards to this?
Unfortunately, they're not here.
Okay.
And again, same thing, just like my colleague said previously, in the time of building permit, things like that, we still can, we can get it denied. We've had that in the past where we come in with a building permit and we've made improvements, right, to make those, to address those concerns at that time.
Can we do something similar, like in the, a prior plat, where we just add the note, like deemed necessary by traffic? Would you just add on the planning comments, number six? I think that takes care of the concern.
Right, exactly. I concur.
So, someone like to, if there's no further questions, or nobody against this item, would somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to, we're going to add, right?
Or we're going to remove?
Remove the traffic. The traffic safety comment one, because it states on the planning comment tips. Is it the same?
It's not removed. It's just coordinate, right? You wanted to add the word coordinate, or no?
But, they're different notes, though. Number six talks about driveways and short access, nothing about insurance.
No, it doesn't.
I think I would just add.
If deemed necessary.
By the traffic department.
Okay. Motion to approve adding in traffic safety, deemed necessary, right? By the traffic department.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner, please. Yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now moving on to reconsideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats.
Mr. Chairman, seven A, the applicant asked if he could table that. I'm sorry, withdraw, withdraw. Motion to withdraw this item?
Second.
Second? Seven A, Harmony Hills.
Seven A.
Motion to withdraw item seven A?
Second.
So, okay, so we have a motion for our commissioner, but.
Second.
Second from Commissioner's advice. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to consideration of following final plats and final replats.
This addition, is this part of the eight?
Is it eight A, eight C?
Eight C?
Eight A, B, C, and D.
But, this.
This is not, we aren't here about right range.
Yeah, so we received some correspondence from the engineer. Unfortunately, he could not make it to the meeting, which is that he agreed, you know, with having it approved for the final plat on that one. That's the one for eight C, cuatro vientos, right range.
That's eight C, is that what?
Yes. Yeah, he just couldn't, not to table it. He's okay with the approval. He just couldn't make it.
So.
Make a motion to take items A, A, B, C, and D together?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Against? Motion carries. Now, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, item eight A. Motion to approve item eight A through eight D.
Have a second?
And eight C. Second. Eight A, eight B, and eight C.
Eight A, eight B, and eight C, and eight D.
A, B, C, D.
Eight A, eight B, eight C, and eight D.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, can staff read for the record?
Sure. For the record, the item approved is final consideration of the plat of North Webb Industrial Park, phase three, part A, the intent is industrial. Eight B, final consideration of the plat of North Webb Industrial Park, phase three, part B, intent is industrial. Eight C, final consideration of the plat of cuatro vientos east, right ranch subdivision, phase eight, and the intent is of eight D, final consideration of the plat of San Rafael subdivision, phase two, the intent is governmental, Webb County Health Center.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, do we have any director's comments?
No, sir.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.